Okay, now go to Facebook. And you're gonna have to load the page when it comes up. There we are. Cool. Hey friends, Bill Baker here. And am I excited about sitting here and talking to you on a Saturday afternoon to introduce myself and also allow you the opportunity to get to know me, get to know why I am running for the second district city council seat. And what I'm gonna do to really help you as citizens of Sun Prairie. And I'm excited about this. You know, I haven't been on the radio for over a month now since the city kicked me off. And so it gives you an opportunity to chat with me and ask me any kind of questions you want. Now, on the messenger's side, you can go in there and you can ask me any kind of question you want. And I have the beautiful Terry Latimer here who's gonna be watching your comments and asking me questions. We already have some questions that are in place and so I'll be answering those. But before we start, let's, let me do this. Let me tell you who I am. I'm a father of two sons, Christopher and Alex. I'm the grandfather of Liam. I'm the future husband of Terry Latimer, the beautiful Terry Latimer who's sitting in here with me right now. I'm a real estate agent. I'm a business owner. I'm an investor. I'm an advocate for the city of Sun Prairie and for you as the people. And I'll tell you about that in a second. I'm a radio personality. And some of you know me as the voice and the face of Sun Prairie football. And God, I hope we get to do that this year. And I'm holding my breath on that one. And of course, I share that duty with Mike Powers and Jameson Rabbit. You know, as a volunteer in our community, I've always believed, and I was taught this by my parents and my grandparents, that you should always share your time, your talent, and your treasures. And I've had a little of all of those. Sometimes I've had talent with no treasures. Sometimes I've had treasures and no talent. But I've always believed that you should really work in your community to make it a better place. And you know, I'm very, very proud that the mayor Paul Esser and the entire city council chose me this past fall to be the recipient of the Charles D. Ashley Award for my commitment to community affairs and activities in Sun Prairie. It's always nice when you have the city government recognize you for all of your efforts. Some of you know me as a member of the Lions Club. Somebody, some know me and see me at the fish fry dinners for Nights at Columbus. Some of you have seen me handing out meals, over 25,000 meals at Sunshine Supper, supporting Shelter From the Storm Ministries and our Single Moms, Parish Council for St. Albert the Great Church, the Christian Giving Fund. And the newest adventure that I have, and I call it an adventure, is that I am one of the founders of an organization called the Anti-Bullying Collaborative. And I'll talk about that in a little while. You know, I have a lot of people that ask me, why in the world would you wanna get into this messy game called politics and run for city council? And I appreciate that question. And believe me, I've thought about it more than one time. Because I've witnessed what's happened nationally, some of local. But, and I did have one or two thoughts, and believe me, my conversations with Terry have really helped guide me. And knowing that I have the support of my spouse is the most important thing to me. And so I decided to go forward. Now, why did I do that? I'm already involved in the community. I think that, I believe that, you know, it's about communications. It's about educating and sharing information with you and getting everything out there. Helping you make decisions, bringing it to you instead of sitting back waiting for the phone to ring or waiting for an email to come in from you, right? So I decided that because I'm at Farmer's Market every Saturday, and I'm interacting with you already, since I'm at Sunshine Supper handing out meals and seeing you there, seeing you at church, that I could take this a step further and actually be the person that helped guides the city of Sun Prairie and do the wishes that you have set in place. You know, Sun Prairie, this is all about you. This is not me. This may, I may be the candidate that's running for office, but really, it's about what you're looking for, what you want in our city. I know we're gonna talk about apartments. We're gonna talk about development. We're gonna talk about crime. We're gonna talk about housing issues. And we're definitely gonna talk about bullying, cuz believe me, it is all over the place. So, think about this, Sun Prairie. Write your question up on the message board, or just come in and say hi. I'd really appreciate you doing that. Right now, I got nine of you that are watching, now 11. So I'm looking forward to that, that interaction. Let me tell you about what I feel is important based upon the conversations I've had with you as the citizens of Sun Prairie, whether it's Shirley, or Elaine, or Chris, that are in my constituency. Their first priority was the core services that we have. And the reason for that, the concern was, our population growth has just gone through the roof. It's exponential. And they're concerned about the safety, the health, and then the public works of our, of our city. So let's talk about the, the safety. You know, I, in a couple of posts on Facebook, I put in there, stop the shootings. We need to stop the shootings. You know, we have a police department, I think, is second to none. It's a friendly, interactive police department that works with the community instead of against the community. They are there to protect and serve. What you don't know is on a given night, given shift, an eight-hour shift, we could have a minimum, get this, a minimum of four police officers to cover a, our population base of 35,000 people. And that's just unacceptable. We need to be able to give them the resources that helps them, our protection, that helps slow down those people on Main Street that are driving so fast. And as you know, oh my God, we had another loss two nights ago when a gentleman went to walk across the street down across from Foxtail and was killed. Now, do we know that they were speeding? No. But we do know speeding occurs there. The shootings have to stop. They have to stop. Now, how are we gonna do that? Here's the difference between an individual that says they support the police and then a campaign or an opponent, I'll call myself, that has a plan. And my plan is working with our sworn personnel and our community. You know, I'm part of the community. I am the eyes and ears of Sun Prairie, just like you are. Together, working with our sworn officers, we can reduce those infractions, that violence that's happening, maybe before it happens. Now, am I suggesting that we become vigilantes and all that? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But you know, we use these things so often to capture videos of people doing things that we need to take that information and we need to share it with our police officers. Our neighborhoods, folks, let me tell you this. Do you know we have a thing called the Navigators, Neighborhood Navigators? Great organization, and I think it needs to grow. We need to put it into bigger neighborhoods. And the reason for that is because the Navigators help strengthen the neighborhood. Now, I'm 59 years old, alright, and I remember the day when we knew every neighbor on our street. Oh my gosh, we were playing football and baseball out in the street. And you know, we could have one of the moms come out and yell at us because we just hit a car or something with a ball, you know? We need to go back to that. We need that closeness in our neighborhoods. And something that I would propose, what I would look forward to doing, and it can be done with tourism and parks and rec, is that we have neighborhood activities. We pull our neighborhoods, neighbors out of their houses when we're safe to do that, because we do know we're still in a pandemic, but we can still do that in a safe way. You know, my marine friends have the saying, adapt and overcome, right? That's what they're taught, adapt and overcome. Nothing stops them. And we're not gonna let this pandemic stop us either, folks. But we can have events and activities like neighborhood get-togethers, where we all bring a dish to pass or, or something like that, and have fun and get closer as neighbors. You know, Terry lives over in Madison, and she has a wonderful neighbor next door to her. And all she has to do is pick up the phone, call her, and she'll let our little Zoe out to go to the bathroom. That's the kind of neighbors that we're looking for. And then if you add our sworn personnel in, that's what makes a neighborhood strong. That's what keeps everybody together and thinking the same way. That's how we stop the shootings. That's how we reduce the violence. And we can do it by, yes, adding sworn officers without a tax increase, by reallocating our budget, looking for areas where we're wasting money. I call it wasting, but to be polite, reallocating those dollars. And in making it happen, four people minimum, four people minimum is unacceptable. We need more staff. And I know that Chief Steffes is in support of this. You'll start with six people on a shift. But what happens is you have vacations. You have some, an officer might be sick. You may have somebody that is maybe doing court time. You may have just a different act, a training or in-service. And so you have that difference in the number of police officers. So it's important for us to really work on that crime, but to do it together, Sun Prairie. It can't be just the police. It has to be all of us coming together. And I hope you like that idea. Eric Johnson, thanks buddy. I love Sun Prairie. We'll, we'll do what is best for, absolutely. We, I will work to do what's best for Sun Prairie. After, get this, I listen to you. And I listen to our neighbors. When I come out to you and talk to you, I'm not gonna sit at a desk waiting for my phone to ring. I will come to you and bring you the issue. So I'm gonna take a little bit of pause here and give you guys a time to catch up. And if you have questions, throw them up there if you like. And thanks Eric for starting with the first question. I appreciate that. Terry, you got any questions?
Um, yes. So my question is, I know you've interviewed several agencies in Sun Prairie. What was the most interesting thing that you learned from those interviews?
Are you talking like our departments and stuff? Oh, sure. Okay, so she's, if you didn't hear that, she's asking me, because I've met with several of the department heads, and I will meet with all of them before I'm elected in April, to get a feeling about how things are and what's going on. One of my most, well, every one of them has been enjoyable. But the last one I had was with Scott Kugler, and we were talking about housing. And we were talking about apartment buildings, folks. And that might be a good subject for you if you wanna hop on and, and learn about that. But our housing situation right now in Sun Prairie is a housing crisis. You know, we, you talk about affordable housing. You talk about low-income housing. You talk about workforce housing. Well, what are the definitions of those three? A lot of people just throw those ideas out there, those, those words, those phrases, and then they'll say, I support workforce housing, or I support affordable housing. Well, I think that's a bunch of crud. Because if you don't have a plan, then you can't support what's going on. Here's what you need to know, and I got two parts to this. The first part is that right now in Sun Prairie, we have 11 single-family homes on the market. That is it. So what that means is you have 11 homes where you can go out and write an offer to buy a house. Okay, 11 of them. Normally, in our past years, we've been at 50 to 90 homes available. Now, here's the, one of the issues with this is that the average price of the homes that are listed right now are $419,000. How does a first-time homebuyer buy that property? The other problem with having only 11 homes, and by the way, five condominiums are on, the other day there was only one. But go back to houses. The problem that we have when you have 11 homes is that you have a competitive feeding frenzy when you go to write an offer. Now, I've had offers that are 10, 15 offers on a single property. And when properties are being sold at 10 and 20,000 over the asking price, we have a housing crisis, and we need to, to work on that. Now, some of you are gonna say, well, we just need to keep building houses. Yes, we do need to keep building houses. And our builders and developers in our area are working their butts off. They are. They are at full capacity. Anywhere from Brandy Martin or Veridian, Miller Construction. They are at full speed in what they're doing, and they're trying to catch up. You know, it used to take three months to build a home. Now, it's six to seven months to build a home, and the cost is skyrocketing. Did you know that lumber has jumped 175%? The price of lumber has jumped 175% since November, since November. And so what's happening is those costs continue to rise. So that's why you see these escalated prices. Here's my concern also, when I only have 11 homes for sale in Sun Prairie. Let's say that you're, you now have a new job, and you're working at Open Hearth, the bakery. You're part of the management team. And you wanna live in Sun Prairie because the school districts are so fantastic. You want your kids in there, but there are no homes to buy. Where are you going to go? What are you going to do so your kids can be in the Sun Prairie School District? Let me tell you what you're gonna do. You're gonna go to one of the apartment buildings. You're gonna go to one of the properties that are for rent. And that is gonna fill up our apartments. And then what happens is the developers, the get-parts out there, the feeders that are out there say, hey, I'm at 100% occupancy. And 100%, by the way, is around 95 and higher, because you have properties to flip. They're gonna build more apartments. And I know that's something that you don't care for, Sun Prairie, but we, it's gonna happen. It's absolutely gonna happen. Now, let's talk about apartments for a second, cuz multifamily properties is a very sore subject in Sun Prairie. And I get it. I get that you don't want that building in your backyard. I get it. And the Colorado Commons, I would have voted down. I would have voted against that because it goes against all those residents that bought homes around that area and bought it because there wasn't gonna be an apartment building there. It was gonna be a clinic. But let me tell you why we have to have those apartments. And I know some of you and some of my friends that are watching right now, you're saying, oh my gosh, he's talking about apartments. I can't believe he's doing this. Let me tell you the importance of those apartments. Someone like Holman Lindsay, about the bakery, the foundry, your restaurants in the area, rely on those apartments for the, for their employees. Cuz here's what happens, Sun Prairie. You get somebody that's in Manona, they live in Manona, they come out here and they get a job. And they can't find a place to live, but they take the job anyway, and they driving back and forth. And then after a while, they quit and go to a job in Manona because they just got a dollar more, or the same pay. But now we have an employment gap with the business in Sun Prairie. And if you wanna talk to Matt Mulcarick, he'll tell you, the cost of training employees, if you didn't know this, is very high. They make an investment, and they want that investment to stay. So that's why we have to have those apartments. Not everybody can buy a house. And as a real estate agent, I'll tell you right now, I would love everybody to be in a home. I would love them to be a, a part of the community in the way of ownership. But it's not gonna happen. It's not a reality, even with the special programs we have. Oh, we got another question. I'm sorry.
Yes. There was recently an article about a possible 5% sales tax increase. Can you please explain your position on this, and if it differs from the current order, how it differs?
Well, let me tell you right now that I'm absolutely against it. I'm not wishy-washy about it. I'm not, I don't need to know what it's gonna be, be used for or not gonna be used for. Folks, what I know about right now during this pandemic, during this economic crisis for a lot of people, including our seniors, is that, that half a percent sales tax would devastate them. We don't need to put more tax on the little people or the people that are struggling financially. It's just, it's just not good. It's not a great direction. And I really appreciate, appreciate that question. That just came out last week, so thanks for asking that. And I know there's also some other wishy-washy, even the mayor is saying that he would support it. Well, I, I can't support it. I, it's, I just can't do it. Not at this time, guys. No way. No way. You know, I always say this, together we can make a difference. And I'm always, always saying on my radio shows and that, local, local, think hyper-local. Always start buying in Sun Prairie first. Now, if it costs you an extra dollar, buy it in Sun Prairie. You know, Jenny down at Faded Roots is a wonderful example of this. She has taken, taken a concept, brought it into the downtown square area of Sun Prairie. And if you've never been to Faded Roots, you should go there because, guys, your ladies will like it. Just go in there and shop, and Jenny will take care of you. Trust me, it's one of the best places in town. I like it, and I think Terry likes it too, cuz she gets those little gifts and that. But she's an example of thinking local. So my Christmas was in Faded Roots. I took care of that, my gifts. I always go to Faded Roots first. I may go to Prairie Flowers first. These are small companies. Full Mile, Buck and Honeys, Beans and Cream, Daily's, you know, Salvator's, oh my gosh, Salvator's. Thinking local. Think local. That's supporting our businesses. And I really don't know if we're doing enough for them, to be honest. You have another question?
Um, yeah. So you talked about reallocating money. How would you reallocate money?
Oh, great question. Reallocating money. Let me give an example of this. Recently, a request for financial proposal, or an RFP, came out for a housing study for Sun Prairie. $60,000 cost, $60,000 cost to study the housing market. Sun Prairie, let me tell you this right now. We are so fortunate to have some of the best real estate minds in Wisconsin living in Sun Prairie, whether it's Nick Conrad, Ann Baranski, Chris Schmidt, myself. We also have mortgage bankers and banks that know the market that way, from Bank of Sun Prairie, Laura Stanfield. You've got an entire group of people, the folks at Fairway Mortgage. They know our market. They know what's going on. Our builders, our developers, our architects. Greg Cashman is an architect on, in the company, or our, our community. Our builders, as you know, Veridian, you've got Randy Martin, you've got the Miller Brothers, you've got Voyager. You have so many people. We know the market. Valerie Rink from, I'm blanking on the name now. It's a... I'll think of it in a second. It's that gray matter, that's all. We have a great group of people, folks, that already know the marketplace, and we don't need to use $60,000 to get that information. You wanna know trends? I can tell you. The statistics I have, I track weekly, and then I report monthly. And I know other agents in the area do the exact same thing. Your mortgage bankers, they know when their rates are ticking up and down based upon mortgage bonds. So we have those people. That $60,000, people, is one new police officer, one new EMS, one new fireman, two new firemen, actually. So we have that opportunity. I think that we had a gentleman that brought up the point that our city attorney and the way that they're utilizing dollars and hiring outside law firms to handle processes is not something that I agree with. Almost over $400,000 in the budget for city attorney. Now, we do need, need that legal aspect in there, but I think there are other options that we can have for that. I'm not talking about eliminating jobs. I'm talking about better utilization of the cash that we have. And of course, we could always go to sidewalks and talk about that. But how about this? You know, we're talking right now that the Aquatic Center needs repairs. Did you know that? And I believe the number's between 300 and a half a million dollars in repairs. Now, we can't use the park and rec dollars because that's for new ventures, like our splash pads and all that. But wouldn't it be cool if we had a Holman Lindsay Aquatic Center? Or how about the Prairie Athletic Club Aquatic Center? How about a public and private interaction to make things happen? And that way, we have a community working together with business, right? That's how we save money. That's where we get that infusion of cash. Now, this isn't new. This isn't an idea that I have had. Look at the high school, our football field. You know, it's the Sun Prairie Bank at Ashley Field, right? And so, look at the money that was donated there. We have the resources. We have the companies and the businesses where we can do public and private dollars, bring them together, and reduce cost. We also need to rely on our people. You know, I gave you examples of real estate agents. We have others in our community that we can pull onto committees, task force, and boards to get the answers that we need. We, we don't necessarily need to spend the money to go out and study something to death, because the study is already being done in our community. Who better to know the community than the person that's living there?
You have another comment?
Can you roll that down a little bit?
Um, there's talk about improvements, additions to the park and ride, changing station, restrooms, et cetera. Is that, in your opinion, a worthwhile investment, especially with the remote working going on as businesses work around COVID?
That's another great question. And you know, our park and ride and our, the metro service and that, I, I'm staying in curiosity and I will seek to understand. But I wanna find out, is it valuable to us? And the park and ride and that charging station? How are we using that? Is it gonna be cost-effective? Because we know, I can tell you right now as a real estate agent, the trend right now is to move outside of city. The trend is to build an office in a house and in a second work area or study area for kids. We know that's what's going on. So we need to look and see how the transportation is gonna change over the next maybe three to five years. But I'm concerned about that cost and the charging stations especially. Great question.
Do you think after COVID, businesses will continue to work remote? Or will they continue to go back to their buildings?
If you didn't hear that, the question was, do you think that businesses are gonna go back to working at their offices? Or are they gonna stay virtual? Well, I think that, that idea's being kicked around a lot. And what I mean by that is, there are some companies out there where we need that human interaction. We need the synergy that is built when people are around people. You know, it doesn't matter, you can agree or disagree with somebody, but the important thing is when you disagree, growth occurs. Growth occurs. And so we need to have that interaction. I don't know about you folks, but I'm tired of being zoomed, or doing Zoom. I get zoomed out in a way. But what I, what I think we'll see is kind of a hybrid, Terry, of, of businesses coming back if they can and not. I'm concerned about the, the office segment in commercial real estate, to be honest with you. We'll see some retail coming back now, some fresh boutiques, but that office space is gonna be a challenge. It's gonna be a couple of, three years.
So, have you had people come up and ask you if you're planning on running for mayor?
Oh, yes, I've had people ask me, why didn't I run for mayor? Well, and I appreciate that. I'm a cheerleader. I'm a huge cheerleader for Sun Prairie. I love this city, and there is no better place to live. But you know, in our setting, we have, have, the way our structure is, the mayor is a, a figurehead in the community. The city council is where the work happens. And the mayor comes in to make, that breaks a tie on votes. And the mayor does work on the budget and everything else. And, but no, I, I was told by, in fact, Neil Stickshulte said to me that I would do better working, being a city councilman than being a mayor. Speaking of Neil Stickshulte, Neil was an absolute amazing gentleman, a huge cheerleader of this town. I miss him. He's going to Green Bay. It's his, the job that he has always wanted because he's around his Green Bay Packers. And I'm very happy and very thrilled that he's able to go to Green Bay and run even a bigger department. But for economic development, and what you need to know, Sun Prairie, from me is that as a councilperson, I am that cheerleader. I have no problem going to a business, going to an organization and asking them to come to Sun Prairie. We need to make Sun Prairie a destination, not just for Costco, but to come here and stay overnight. Come here and be here for, you know, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I would love to see athletic fields in Sun Prairie where we can bring football, soccer, lacrosse. Football, baseball, all in one location that captures how many people so we can pick, pick up that room tax. And that room tax is new revenue. It's not tax, it's new revenue that comes into the general fund. New ideas like that. You know, I said to Neil that when everything happened down in Madison and the businesses started shutting their doors, the first thing I would like to do is run down to State Street on, in Madison and say, the first thing I would like to do is run down to State Street on, in Madison and say, you come to Sun Prairie, we will show you the love and set you up and really make you profitable. That's again, going out and being, being, uh, optimistic, being a little assertive and asking for that business. We need bigger businesses. We need bigger operations in our town. And some of you are right now probably rolling your eyes when I said that, because you don't want more development. Well, if we want to control our tax base, if we want to keep that mill rate down, um, and to help with our property taxes, we need more businesses. And that's why we still need to support the businesses that we have right now in Sun Prairie.
What other events besides sporting events would you sponsor or would you like to, um, highlight in Sun Prairie?
Well, I, I love Angel Park. I love the races and the, the midgets that are down there and that is a part of Sun Prairie history, something we never, ever can lose. What I'd like to see is in the winter time, I'd like to see snowmobile races on that track. Or how about this, a huge, um, snowmobile rally that's out in Angel Park. They can be out there parked their sleds, have a lot of fun, uh, bringing bands for outdoors. It can all be done. And during pandemic, we can do this. Now, we're all being vaccinated. That's a great step. We know we have a long way to go. But again, we have, we have the means, the knowledge and the experience to put an event on that will, uh, benefit our city. I, I think, I think it's just, it would be a fabulous event. We need to bring concerts into our stadium. We need to work with our school. Breeze Stevens holds nothing to us compared to the seating of six and seven thousand people that we could put at that stadium when we have permission and all that good stuff, right? How about moving our, uh, soccer team that's looking for a home and bringing them to Sun Prairie on the nicest, uh, stadium and field you've ever seen? It can be done. We have to be the ones that goes and gets that opportunity and not sit back and wait for them to knock on our door and walk in and then maybe lose them. Now, you know, we have Hy-Vee coming in, which I think is fine. We, we got, we're gonna have another grocery coming in, folks. And a lot of, a lot of you out there are saying, and I've seen it on Facebook, not another grocery. Well, think about this, the more groceries there are, the lower your prices are in products. They have to. They're going to be fighting for your attention. And the way they get your attention is by throwing specials out there and deals on that chicken breast and those peas and, uh, eggs, bananas a big one, you know, twenty-nine dollars a pound is a good deal. Not fifty-nine cents, but twenty-nine cents is a good deal. They're gonna fight for that. Now, will we have some groceries fall away? Probably, we, we could. But you gotta think, Costco's a different kind of vendor, Target's a different kind of vendor. Um, Woodsman, Woodman's is a different kind of, uh, vendor. They're attracting different demographics. You've got two Pick and Saves and you got the one on the far side towards Marshall. They're in an environment all their own and we don't have any growth over there yet. So it, we have a lot of opportunities out there. Other was?
All right, um, somebody's asking about when do you think you'll be on the air again? Perhaps some members do not know why you are no longer doing your radio show and look forward to hearing from them again.
Oh, well, I gotta tell you, um, I donate about between three and four hundred hours volunteering to be on one oh three five and K-Sun, our local TV and radio station. And, uh, I, I am so proud of it. I'm, uh, I've won many, many awards for excellence for my shows. Good Morning Sun Prairie and the Sun Prairie Real Estate Show and then also our broadcast of football games. You know, when you have somebody that is working for, as an employee, uh, it could go the same way as for a volunteer. The Federal Communication Commission has designed rules that will define exactly what has to happen when somebody runs for office. Now, the rules say that if you have an opponent, that opponent, uh, gets equal time. So I was doing three hours a week and, uh, my opponent has never been on the radio. The FCC says he has to come to the radio station and request that time. Now, what you need to know is we've got a first rate, uh, executive director for the media center in Jeff Robbins. And Jeff Robbins went above and beyond what the standards were and what he does and what he dictates that we do. And yes, it's, he, I use the word dictate right, is we approached both candidates at the same time to offer that time. So he went out and he offered to my opponent the three hours and, and he turned it down. And, you know, I get it, radio and TV can be scary, um, but it shouldn't be. And, but what the FCC says that if the opponent turns it down, you're still allowed to broadcast. And you can find this information if you'd like, uh, you can send it to me, send me a message and I will send you that information. What happened instead was, we had an overzealous, um, city council person that saw me as a threat. And so he went to the city attorney and the city attorney hired an outside firm, uh, Steve Zach from Boardman to try to talk me into shutting down my radio show. And the reason for that was because they felt it was not fair. And, and I don't know what was not fair about it. All the doors were opened on it. So they, they did shut me down and then they created a brand new policy that says that if somebody on the radio or on TV, if you're gonna run for office, you have to go off the air. So I'll be back on the air April sixth, the day after, I hope, the day after the election. And I will give you all the news and everything that goes on. And that'll be my first real estate show that Wednesday following. But, uh, I didn't like the way it had, the handled. I didn't really make a big deal about it. Uh, because I want to focus on what we need to do and that's handling our core services. Safety, we need to make sure fire and EMS have the equipment and the staff to get to your house when your house is on fire. Or if you, uh, have a, a need for an emergency or an ambulance, they get there on time or faster than they can to save you from that heart attack that you just had. And then also, uh, public works. We need to make sure that when we flush those toilets, they actually flushed and it goes away. We also, we also need to make sure our roads are clear, right? They, we need to make that road repairs. There's a lot of divots right now around those manhole covers for some reason. And I know the guys in our departments worked their butts off, but we need to give them the support and resources to make sure those things happen.
Okay, so, um, maybe last election saw a racial slur hurled at a local candidate. Recently, we had a school assignment asking how someone would punish a slave. What will you do to address these racial issues?
First of all, the racial issues are unacceptable. Uh, racial slurs are unacceptable, period. And people make mistakes though. Now, you, I think what we have to do is when an issue like this comes up, instead of attacking right away, and I'm talking about the, the assignment that was out there, we need to stay in curiosity. We need to seek to understand before we come to go into judgment on it. Um, assignments, we're gonna have various assignments in, in our kids' lives. And we know that they're gonna be controversial issues. We know there are gonna be some that are, are insensitive, but we need, it's how we present that. Um, I won't tolerate any of the, the racism or, uh, slurs or anything like that. There's, it's, it's unheard of. I will, I will come right out on it. Uh, I'm not sure if that's what they want me to, how they want me to answer that.
So there was a comment on Facebook that you made about, um, asking more people to get involved instead of just voicing concerns, actually taking action.
Oh, that's a good one, Terry, and thank you. So, uh, what came up folks was, um, this, the subject about what happened in our school district is still very sensitive and I, I, I get it to the much as I can understand it. But there's a lot of ill feelings right now and just a lot of, um, comments and accusations and asking for this and asking for that. And I, we need people of color in leadership positions. And we're not getting that. We're getting a little bit of it and the reason for that is it's, they're not being supported. I want anybody that wants to run for office to step up and run for office. And then I want you Sun Prairie to support them. If, if you have somebody of color or, or heritage, whatever, listen to them and support them. It, it can't be just about pointing fingers. And as I can hear my mother saying this, be careful pointing a finger because three of them are coming back at you. Be careful of that. But if we want to make change, if we want to stop these things from happening, if we want to stop the assignments, if we want to stop the slurs, we have to do it together. And we need to have people in place that are willing to step up. Great folks is you. It's the people of Sun Prairie that makes it so great. You know, we had an event happen in our history that we will never forget and we call it the explosion, right? The blast. And from that came such a, uh, an overwhelming, um, man, passion. I'm getting emotional talking about it. I, I knew Cory and so I, it's, it's an emotional subject, but we all came together as a community. We hugged each other and then we worked together to heal ourselves. That's what Sun Prairie is about. It's about having a first-class school district with educators that love your children. You know, I, I, I have an educator sitting right next to me. And she would tell you that the hardest thing she has right now is she was missing her kids and then being able to hug them and interact with them. The Zoom was just not doing very well. It's okay, but it's, it's not, not the best, right? It's you, Sun Prairie. It's about having the, um, some of the traditions we have, Groundhog Day, right? It's about having a media center that nobody else has. A media center that works with your kids, takes your kids and teaches them how to do photography or videography, um, editing, producing, directing, making their own TV shows. And they have a channel all their own, channel, uh, kids' channel. And making radio shows. We have some great ones. So we have just an environment that is just so, so attractive to people that we've become one of the fastest growing cities in Wisconsin. And it's because of you, Sun Prairie. That's why people come here, because we welcome everybody, period.
So it sounds like you'd like to expand and increase Sun Prairie, but how would you, um, continue to foster that community feeling within that? Bringing more people in, but still make sure it feels like a, a community that people wanna, wanna live and raise their children.
So you're talking about a, a big city feeling like a small town?
Yeah.
Awesome. So remember in the very beginning, I talked about the navigators? And it's all about neighborhoods and we, that's what we need to do. We need to bring our neighborhoods together. You need to get to know the people next door. You need to get to know the people behind you. And that's before their dog poops in your yard. Get out there and learn who your neighbors are and then have neighborhood events. You know, uh, I went to school in Virginia. I studied business administration, then moved to, uh, outside of Philadelphia. And, um, Philadelphia is so full of, uh, celebrations and the, the ethnic celebrations are fabulous. Especially Italian fest and that, it's amazing. Go to South Street, you experience the whole thing. Neighborhoods do events together. They shut off streets. And it really makes things happen. And we need to do things just like that. We need to celebrate our heritages. We need to celebrate our neighborhoods and we need to do more activities every single weekend and week. And enjoy it all. Bring us all together. Why do, oh, okay, here's a, uh, the question for the real estate agent is why do property taxes keep increasing? Well, folks, uh, I'm gonna tell you right now that our, uh, last year in 2020, in the city of Sun Prairie, and I'm just doing city of Sun Prairie, and I can do any city you want, just reach out and ask me and I'll be glad to provide you with the information, is our, the property values increased over six percent last year. So we're seeing that steady growth. Because inventory is low, and inventory of homes available are low. And because interest rates are historically low, they're still below three percent right now. And the demand is still high, you're gonna see prices increase. And that will not change unless you get a lot of houses that come onto the market or the interest rates jump high. Now, interest rates, by the way, when they move up, that's a good sign. That's a very good sign. It's a sign of a strong economy. But the reason that we're having an increase in property taxes is because our property values have gone up significantly. And, um, also keep this in mind too, our last assessment that we had, that was a three-year assessment, not a two-year. Uh, we had, they, they set it off by a year. And so we were reassessing over a three-year period instead of every two years. Now, there were mistakes in that assessment and if you remember, if you saw it online, I caught some of them. Some of the duplexes out there were being charged a forty-two to forty-seven percent increase in value over three years. And that's impossible. It just can't happen. I, I don't care who you are, it, it just can't happen. But property values, they're gonna continue to go up. Our key is that we need to keep the expenditures in the city and what we're doing in balance and seeing where we can, uh, reallocate dollars. It's not always cutting, it's about reallocating. Use these dollars from here over to here. How's that? Thanks. So why don't we do this? Why don't we wrap up? You've been very patient with me. I appreciate it and, uh, I want to hear from you. I want to know what's going on in your lives and what's important to you about for Sun Prairie. And so reach out to me, go into Messenger, send me a message. You can email me, uh, at, uh, bill, uh, we'll use that one, bill@billbakerforsunprairie.com. That's bill@billbakerforsunprairie.com. You know, Sun Prairie, we together can make a difference in this community, but we have to do it together. And I know we can do it because I believe in you. So let's get her done. Thanks, Sun Prairie. Now, download it when it says download, wherever.